Good evening. This is a special meeting of the X on October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, a special meeting of the Towne Old Line Economic Development Commission. We are in the mezzanine conference room of Town Hall. In attendance, we have Commissioners Scott Smith, Mona Colwell, Jeff Hartman, John Stratton, Jean Wilczynski, and myself, Cheryl Corrier. M.J. Derizio is planning to call in. We've had technical issues this evening, so she will be excused if she cannot call in. Also excused are Joe Camian and Wendy Russell. We have our clerk here, Jen Damato, and we have a guest, Edie Twining, for the part of the meeting when we are talking about Hall's Road. I do not know if we have anyone on the phone who are members of the public, but if so, we welcome you, and now is your opportunity to share any public comment. Is there anyone on the phone? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to our SWOT analysis for the Shoreline Gateway Soundview area. Joe Camian is our representative to the Shoreline Gateway Committee that works on this issue, and he is unable to attend tonight's meeting, but I think in the coming weeks, we will be able to get his feedback on any additions he thinks would be helpful to our SWOT analysis this evening. I had one other guest lined up from that committee who was unable to make it, but I would like to share with you notes from a conversation I had with business owner Ted Cannabis? I think is his last name, Teddy's Pizza Palace? I spoke with Teddy this morning, and I'd like to share with you now his thoughts on the area. Teddy has been in business there forty-four years. I knew it was long, but I didn't realize it was that long. And I think it's fair to say that he is frustrated by the lack of progress along Shore Road and in that area. This past year, business was down more than usual because they did not have the beach attendants, the day trippers to the beach that they've had in past years. What kept his summer relatively stable were the cottage vacationers, the people who come for a week or maybe for the summer. As soon as the summer is over, he always sees his business plummet during the winter months. He said, "It feels like a lot of the town doesn't even realize that Eastern One Fifty-Six exists in town." Part of that is that a lot of people don't travel past the crossroad intersection, but he feels like people forget about that part of town. He now, I don't know if you are aware of this, but during the pandemic and for a couple of years after the pandemic closures, Teddy was takeout only, and he's now reopened the indoors. You can now sit inside again, but he hasn't seen his business grow or, you know, like bounce back with that indoor seating. He does work at being sure people are aware of his restaurant. He has already been down to the workers for the Ferry Road project and gave out menus and told them, you know, "Go up One Fifty-Six, there's a mini mart there, there's a gas station there, I'm there." So he's very intent and active in trying to strengthen his business. But, he said, "It doesn't matter who is in office, Republican or Democrat, nothing really changes." There are lots of efforts, lots of conversations about improvements, but his feeling is that when people come up with an idea and want to invest in an idea, they're told no. Whether it's the storage unit or it's one of the buildings several years ago, kind of east of his building, a couple in town wanted to make that a small office building on Shore Road, and they were told no, they were too close to Wetlands. So there's not, in his perspective, a lot of ways to seek solutions that will work for people and also ways to just get more traffic down there. He really would obviously benefit from more traffic. Uh, let's see. He said, "People are told, 'Make your business look nice, invest in your business, invest in your business, make it look nice,'" and then that people try to do that and they're told no. The other thing is with sewers, his understanding is because he has a, an apartment upstairs from the pizzeria, that will cost him for one pipe a hundred thousand dollars because they're charging him for two units, the apartment and the pizzeria. Let me just check my notes and see if, um, we talked for quite a bit. I tried to really summarize our conversation. People want to do things, bring traffic to Shore Road, and then they're told no. That was really something that he finds quite frustrating. I know that the Shore, uh, the Shoreline Gateway Committee has been working on the past year. They've done a survey, which I think we saw the, the results of, maybe, where are we at? About a year ago, and a lot of respondents wanted to see more family-friendly activities and businesses down there, clearly cleaning up blight. I know Joe Camian has brought that interest to the EDC, talking about the blight improvements. So are there any other insights or things people want to add before we start going through our SWOT analysis about the Shoreline Gateway Soundview area?
I just can say that I had a, that was that exact conversation, and I think I shared this with you at the midsummer, all of these complaints.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah.
From people.
Yes.
Coming and stopping.
Right.
To me about why Old Line is a horrible place to do business.
Oh, in general terms, across town, in terms of getting things done?
All of it.
Gotcha, okay.
Were they mostly Shoreline Gateway area?
Business things or just general?
I don't, I don't know. They were just, it was two different occasions, all these same complaints. That's how they felt overall about Old Line as a place to do business.
Would you say it had to do with people feeling like people on commissions block things or don't want things to get done? It's that aspect of it, yeah, okay.
Or like what Teddy's saying, that he's frustrated by the lack of progress and people just don't, people want to do things, and then when they try to do things, they're shut down. But not everybody is, so that's worth a little bit interesting, because then, you know, you can't say that, like, though I didn't fully agree with it, I'm just saying that I've heard this exact thing.
And I think there are areas where that has happened.
Yeah.
And we, we could point right down the street, probably how many years ago, when the Chocolate Shell one, they said, "For coffee," that was the big no, right? And...
And the, and the several years that the, by Scream Shop, which proved to be quite successful, had to jump through many hoops, both for the Historic District Commission and zoning.
Right.
And yet, it is, historically, it is a commercial site.
Which is what the Soundview Commission, Committee is trying to address, right? That's this report from Soundview?
Yeah, it's the two thousand and twenty-three report. So the key findings were family-friendly, walkable building setting, blight, new businesses that support local residents and visitors should be encouraged, rest on bakery, but the majority of respondents have a positive outlook for the future of this area. So that's the, this is the survey results that were presented.
So to start our SWOT analysis, would anyone like to start us off?
Yeah, strengthen the location.
And should we stand on that to say?
Water, water boot.
Yeah. Okay.
And I would like to add, for good or ill, it is well-known to people who do not live around here.
That's a good point, John.
Pre-marketing.
Very surprising.
Yeah, it's very well-known. That's why it's called Hartford Avenue.
Yeah, when you talk to people up, I have a lot of family up in the Simsbury, Avon area, and, you know, their circles of friends in that general area, when you say you live in Old Line, "Oh, Soundview." Okay. So that's what they know first. And you lived up that way.
Yeah.
It wasn't always a positive.
Right, right. Awareness. But a lot of family cottages are down there.
I even lived outside of this town most, you know, I've owned many of three years. Yet, it's always been seen as a positive because years ago, it was booming down there.
Not too bad, bro. What meeting are you looking for?
Old Line, Twitch, Twitch Garden. Uh, there's a little conference here, whatever. Back of this one. Edie, would you bring Sheldon over?
Sure. I don't know that there's a meeting tonight, though, there. All right, sorry for the interruption. Um, okay, yeah, the well.
Like I say, it's like, years and years ago, I used to come down here a lot. Yeah. Because it was booming down there, you know?
Yeah.
You go to the pavilion, whatever, but the beach was packed all the time, I mean, you know, so I wasn't a local, so you don't get exposed to the negative parts of those things.
Right, right.
There was no shortage of traffic.
Yeah.
For, and people, for, we are going back many years ago.
Yeah.
But that continued until fairly recently.
Yeah. Yeah.
Fairly recently meaning fifteen years.
Yeah, I would, I would agree, that's my sense, too, not living down there, but that's you and...
No, but did you ever go and visit on a Friday or Saturday night and just walk up and down the street and...
No, I took my kids to the carousel once a day.
Or Sunday morning to pick up those.
Sure, perhaps, yeah.
So, you know, the infrastructure challenge with the septic issue, I believe.
Yes.
And construction challenges.
I think also people have, you know, they have good memories of Soundview, whether it's a young adult going to the pavilion or as a family getting a cottage here every summer and doing the carousel and Italian ice or, you know, whatever the case may be.
Do you know if anybody down there, do they have a rental problem in the summer? Like trying to rent them?
I don't think so. I think it's pretty common.
It's trying, it's, it's rentable.
So it's an opportunity to revisit some of the zoning laws that currently apply, maybe unlock some development potential?
I, I would, okay, to follow up on what you said, the Village District, which the Economic Development Commission spearheaded.
Yes.
Was approved by the state and the town, so that there is essentially a, I hesitate to use overlay, but it's, but there is a pre-approved coverage for improvements there. Now, it hasn't, that, to my knowledge, it has not been deeply exploited by the merchant community.
I think that's a good way to put it, and I think part of that is waiting on sewer, the sewer decision. I don't want to say sewer is happening, the sewer decision. I think a lot of people are waiting because they don't know, are they going to have to rip up their front, frontage for the sewers if they do something? Is it going to change their occupancy or their cost of doing business?
So it's both a strength and a weakness simultaneously. That is, it is a weakness that septic hasn't been approved thoroughly anyway. I mean, in fact, there's lawsuits brought forward, but on the other hand, there is the potential to do it, and it's pre-approved.
The potential to?
To improve, to put up, to sew, sewage. I mean, that, the principle has been established.
Yeah, they have, and John, I know you were on that at the time. They have the design standards and that sort of thing all worked out.
To the extent that it, it was required, yes, it did. There were, there were actually, there was a large-scale study by Yale Design Group, which had three phases of development. The more advanced phase seemed to scare people, the less advanced stage required some kind of change to zoning. So the Village Districting, that's a, that's a term of art, Village Districting, was approved by the state and by the town. So hence, there is somewhere a sign which says Soundview Village District.
And I know in the zoning, it's the VVVD, the, yeah, Soundview Village District, so it has its own zoning.
So that's a good thing, in the, in the sense that if someone came in with, with real heavy-duty paperwork that wasn't too frightening, by that I mean too complex for the town to absorb, it could be approved rapidly. But, the question that you raised and other people have raised with respect to, you know, waiting for the water and sewers caused a few people just to back out and sell their places and in fact tear them down. They're still for sale, however. So no one, this is conjectural and hypothetical, but no one stepped forward with five million dollars to take a block of buildings, tear everything down and build condos or whatever, beach condos, which would be very difficult, I believe, not as an attorney, but I believe would have been difficult to reject it. So, you know, if there were force from the outside, that has not happened, and we, there's plenty of facts to appear, so my belief now is that it's never going to happen unless water and sewage come forward.
And just to clarify, water is city, I call it city water, what do you, public water is in place, but the sewer is not, obviously. So Village District in place, so there's a mechanism to, to do improvements. How about under weaknesses, blight on short, well, on both roads, right?
Seasonal, too. Seasonal. Oh, after you, the next, uh, weakness would be seasonal.
Sure. As a weakness, yeah. You know, I believe some of the businesses were asked to stay open a little bit longer into the shoulder season, and one of the big problems they run into is they're, the college students have gone back to school. They don't have the employees to stay open until the second week of September. They just, they have to, you know, cut back hours and then shut, or shutter for the season because the college students have left, their workforce.
So the threat is that, is it mistaken or forced a resolution of the septic issue?
Yeah. Has, has everyone seen that in the news?
Yeah, a couple days ago.
Yeah. All right. What else do we have?
So the opportunities that are probably, the weakness, opportunities to make it year-round community with commercial activity.
Year-round residential?
Residential and commercial.
I think there's no limit on their year-round residential status right now, it's just people's individual choices, because that's fought, that battle is already fought and won by people. Because it wasn't, it used to be that their water would get turned off.
Yeah.
You know, but that battle's already been fought and won, where people are able to live there year-round now.
I think some of the cottages still get turned off.
That are truly seasonal dwellings.
Yes.
They don't have heat, you know?
People have independently...
They don't have their public water.
Yeah. People have independently drilled year-round wells with the concurrence of, necessary concurrence of Old Line health officials. That's been a limiting thing. So people have indeed independently invested quite a lot in rebuilding buildings, even right on Hartford Avenue. But that's got to be, by definition, spotty because you have to hook up to sewers, or you have to do it all yourself, which means you have to have a big enough lot and an approved well and an approved septic system. So there's room here and there. People have retired to the beach communities and fixed them up and live there happy as planned or as planneds.
Yeah, but the key is, I mean, you really want to get people from outside the town to spend money, right? I mean, I, I don't know if this has changed, but I, when I first moved here, I thought the parking cost was like in, out of whack because, you know, you could go down the road for free, why go to the beach there and pay?
To Rocky Neck.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're a Connecticut resident.
Mm-hmm. I think what was happening was Rocky Neck was closing, and then that overflow was coming to Soundview.
Yeah.
Or they want to be near the...
But isn't the parking cost really expensive to go for a day, let's say?
Um, I think that's been resolved in the last year or so. They brought down the price and they had more hourly parking and...
I think a lot of the private lots charge like twenty bucks.
Yeah, the private lots, you're right, are market-driven, I would say.
Yeah. I've never seen it higher than twenty, but, but a weakness would be parking.
Yeah.
It's always a weakness, or not a threat, a weakness.
Lots of parking costs, parking.
Also, the, 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 really not, oh, yeah, the parking, but it's just like a small lot that the property can end up, when they want to be in the town lot, it was at nine or ten, and your car could get left in if you park in there and, it's just, it's confusion, really.
Yeah, I would agree with that, yeah. It's not, it's not a clear, the, the parking rules are not clear.
Wow.
I don't know if this is a strength or a weakness, but the private lots are regulated by the town and they pay a substantial amount of money upfront to run.
It's not that substantial, it's a couple of thousand.
A couple of thousand dollars based on their projected income. Some, I, I agree with you, it's not, not a staggering amount of money, but requires them to go downstairs and pay for the permit, and they seem that they, whoever they are, there seems to, there seems in the abstract to be difficulty with opening up other privately-owned parking lots. So there are at least four or five right on Hartford Avenue that would be okay for parking, I mean, they're moving, but they have been chained off and it says family members only and things, things like that, right?
Well, there's, I think there's seven, if I recall correctly, because I, I went to a few of the meetings, there's like seven private public parking place, their grandfathered in.
Yeah.
Nobody else can open up a lot in those spaces.
And, and the large, yeah.
The price has doubled recently to the people that are doing it, but it hasn't increased for a long time, but it's still not that.
And there is a substantial lot, more or less to the west of the police department there, which the town bought, but specifically, it was not to be used for parking at the beach.
There's, yeah.
Well, that's the bus stop now, right?
It's adjacent, but there's a sizable amount of weight. It was used for storage of water and sewage equipment, things like that.
All right, um, other strengths, weaknesses, opportunities or threats?
New business would be an opportunity, right? There's plenty of empty spaces that could use new businesses, right?
I, um, I, yes, and I would add, there's got to be a consideration, which is never a consideration in Old Line, for some incentives. I just don't think Old Line likes incentives.
Well, I think it's, it's always going to be market-driven without that sense of fear. People know that they can come in and they can put something in and they know how much it's going to cost, and they're going to approve it, and that nobody's going to stop them, and then they can, you know, and it's a great, you know, it's a great idea, because a lot of the ideas that have been turned away are great ideas. Like the people that wanted to open the office building right on Route Fifty-Six, and then were told they didn't have enough parking, and they're open, it's just a little small office, they didn't need a lot of parking. But it's those rumors, it's like, and, and those stories, that everybody knows them, you know?
So a, a, opportunity is to work with other commissions to come to some, I don't know, how would we word this?
Yeah, we, I think there's opportunity for EDC to collaborate with, with the Shoreline Gateway Committee. We should work together.
Right, like, like, let's say...
And with zoning and planning.
Yeah, yeah.
So like, you know, maybe if it were, the people knew, they could come to EDC, which, I mean, I, that's sort of why, um, Hydrangea Galore did, right? They kind of came, wanted to see if we would support them.
Mm-hmm.
That's the only one that I know of.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we get calls all the time from businesses that would like to be supported.
Yeah.
Um, but there are only so many ways we can support them.
What does that mean?
Well, we can't, we're not a chamber, and as a government organization, if you will, we have some guardrails on how we can promote one, we can't promote one business over another business. So we can't promote Teddy's over Supo Re's. All we can do is promote an event, like a ribbon cutting, or an expansion, or, you know, some sort of event as opposed, or if they're doing an event. But we can't really, we could promote all our restaurants at the same time, but we can't pick one restaurant over another restaurant, or one landscaper over another landscaper.
There have been instances where we have supported, an individual had, in this particular case, had three ideas for Hartford Avenue, and we sat down and we studied them and chatted with him, and he had a sort of simple, but architectural sorts of plan view drawing, and they said no to all three. Putting stools, for example, like an outside bar, not a drinking bar, but a, like a restaurant bar, a luncheonette bar outside, adjacent to or part of the, the coffee, not the, the coffee, the, the donut shop.
Oh, okay.
Shop having closed, well, why not reopen it as a, just a serving? There's no parking there. You don't have enough parking for the six stools. Well, it was intended for...
Walkings.
Walkings. Well, that was next, and there are three others, two others, so. In other words, we went out on a limb and sent a nice letter and said, following reasons, we approve, we endorse this effort, and they're all shut down, and he just said, "Okay."
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in a town, I mean, come from, in a town where they have a whole EDC, you know, department.
Mm-hmm.
Businesses would come to them, pitch their ideas, and they help shelter it through the zoning and land problems, and that's, that's kind of how it would work. I know we don't have staff, but...
Yeah, but we can write letters, and I should amend my comment to Mona that one, another thing we can do is support businesses, like we're going to hear from Telog in a couple of weeks, which I'm really excited about. Edie, did you have any thoughts on this part of town?
I actually do. I'm assuming the Shoreline Gateway is not just Soundview, is that correct?
It's Soundview plus Shore Road from about Rand Auto Body to the police station.
Okay. Because one of the big opportunities is, and this is only because we've studied this from Hall's Road, but the largest population, residential population in Old Line is all along Mile Creek. So that is one of the biggest populations that's not served in... along Mall Creek. So that is one of the biggest populations that's not served in any way at all by Route one fifty-six. So it's sort of like, everyone always looks at Soundview, Soundview. Well, Soundview has a reputation that I don't want to mention here, which was, it was a sailor town, a bikie town, a place of ill repute for many, many years, and there's a lot of people that still feel bad.
Right.
Including a lot of the leadership, of old school leadership in Old Line, who was like, we don't want those people. So focusing on ways to promote something for the rest of the area, to be able to get something from the Gateway Commission, might be a valuable thing to do. Could be a good opportunity. Um, and, uh, that's one other point I was gonna make. Um, ready for just to come back? But I think definitely the fact that we have such a huge population, I mean, it's, it's significantly larger. If you split Old Line into four quarters, the Mall Creek area, as you know, you've lived there.
Yeah.
And then other people who do, and it's, 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 with a huge planning project in the seventies, they created all of these homes there and they never used to exist. So that's a really big opportunity. One of the biggest weaknesses, I think, and we've, we've mentioned the sewer problem, not only is it needing to have a decision made on it, but whatever is, anything that's built new cannot tie into that sewer system because it's a finite system. It can't handle anything more than what is currently in the area. So that's something that anyone who wants to say, develop a hundred acres, has to build their own septic system, which probably would be a lot better anyway, because you could do a community system and you wouldn't be paying that big bucks to build.
Well, that was in fact demanded by the state, a community system. And I believe that the core of the community system was literally the hundred acres where the golf driving is.
Mm-hmm.
That would be the septic fields.
You mean, that's where they would put most of it?
That's where they would go. And then, uh, in a, uh, a, uh, middle of the week, uh, uh, memo from the state, the town was, so, which had been told to in fact build a plan, create a plan for this inside the borders of the town. The state said, no, we changed our mind. You've gotta send everything to New London.
And one of the issues with that community septic and Hundred Acres is the Cherrystone property, for those not familiar with that. Um, one of the problems was Connecticut Waters' water well is too close to where they were gonna put the community sep, com- community septic on the Cherrystones property.
I mean, the thing is, there's, there's sort of this resistance to move forward in septic projects. If you look at the residential apartments next to the train station in New, in Sabre, that's community septic. It's, it's handling, I think it's a hundred eighty units over there.
Hundred eighty, right.
And it's doing really well.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's a privately run thing. It has nothing to do with townwide use. It's just for that one. So, and there's a lot of those things going on. I know the new idea for, um, the Westbrook project where the old outlets are, that will all have its own community septic system as well. So, I mean, that's the kind of thing that, okay, you can't put it maybe at Hundred Acres, but you could probably find some more spaces, you know, uh, how about where you're gonna put it? Self stories, though. I, you know, I mean, there's other places you could do it and make more sense. The problem I see is that the, the septic being, the sewer being pumped to New London, you can't add any new development, which is another big opportunity is to, is yes, to fill in some of these empty lots in Soundview and also along one fifty-six with better properties and better buildings for those locations. You can't tie into this new system that's going up to New London. It's, it's not feasible. They're maxed out. They can't do it, so.
That's an excellent point.
You know?
And, uh, just to repeat something we've said before, at least I've said before, we have to be prepared to pay, uh, East Line and Waterford's, I forgot the term for it, but it's like a-
Yeah, like pass through?
Yeah.
Pass through, and it, we have to pay for their pumping stations, et cetera, and, and remodelings.
Which is any of those sales, you gotta hold pay yourself.
Those were good additions, Edie. Thank you. Um, anything else to add to this for this evening?
In spite of what, this is an opportunity, I think, in spite of what we have been saying, uh, which is kind of a collective weakness, uh, people are still fixing up houses down there and improving properties on an individual level throughout the entire floor.
It's going to be year round.
Yes, year round. If they can, we're doing year round.
People take pride in their properties?
Definitely take pride in the properties.
Yeah, I like when I go down there and the cottages are all nicely painted and the lawns are fresh and they have flowers out.
And, and many of them, within the families for many, many years, decades, many decades.
So, one thought on threats, I'm not as familiar, but some of those areas probably are in floodplain.
Oh, good point, yeah.
Very hard, yeah. And flood insurance is very high right now.
And so some of them, to, to make a profit, a business, would have to be on some second floor and that's not really feasible, right? It's hard not just a residential home, but there are some, it's kind of a penal-
Insurance, insurance, you know, flows and related insurance, the cost of operating a business down there, not only higher wages, but proper insurance, other kinds. Bank prob- and, I mean, if you went to a, a bank, they'd probably require you to have flood insurance.
Yeah.
It's very expensive.
Jean, I added also Sea Rise, okay with you to-
Yeah, yeah, put that on there. Yeah, that's fine.
Anything else for this evening?
I would encourage us, as I have, and I, I do myself, on kind of a individual basis, just drive around. Now that, now that, uh, they don't have, uh, guards at the gates for the, the community.
It's not parking.
Just drive around, drive down every little street, zigzag, and just keep your eyes out and don't, don't have to answer any questions. You are beneficial, uh, making beneficial appearance. And, uh, so that you have a, a sense of the, the differences between Soundview and Old Colony Beach and Old Line Shores, for example, moving, uh, east of Hartford Avenue.
And I would add that now that it's after October first, or maybe it's October fifteenth, but now we can see who's year round. You know, you could see who gets cars in the driveway for year round residences versus summer cottages.
Do I have, I guess one question, it's not just about this, but, you know, obviously many of the weaknesses and threats have to do with restricted zoning. And is not the City Commission reviewing their zoning? So perhaps it would be helpful for us to hear from them on what exactly changes they're making or they're contemplating.
There is supposed to be an opportunity for the other commissions to weigh in, um, and I need to get more information on that. Can you put that in the minutes, Jen, that I'm gonna find out more about the zoning changes?
The Shoreline Gateway Commission on their September twenty-sixth meeting, uh, they are reviewing the zoning regulations. So it's the sole item on their agenda was on their new business and old business, so they're looking at that.
Yeah, they're looking at C thirties and, in general, because a good portion of that, where Cherrystones is a C thirty and then where Teddy's is, those are C tens, I wanna say. And then, um, Soundview Village District is Hartford Avenue. So, yeah, we should, I know we probably all have in our minds small little bits of this or that, um, in the zoning regulations that we would like to be addressed. So we'll probably have to start making a list.
Can I, can I give you a specific example of a conundrum which was presented to us after the fact? A gentleman who I didn't know personally, had, had plans to make Italian tiles, that is, hard tiles, and with, uh, uh, classical or, uh, Italian decorations on. And wanted to buy the, uh, El Morocco Building, which is the, uh, the, I think the only brick buildings on the street. Uh, used to have nice blue neon signs there. And any of that, he said, this would be a good place for me to put my Italian tiles business. Unfortunately, he presented it as a manufacturing business rather than a apartment.
Oh, okay.
So it was, it was immediately shut down, saying, no, this is manufacturing, we don't do that here. If he had come by us, so to speak, we would say, well, do you design the building? Would they, would, oh, yes, we designed, we get different designs. And would the facility be open to people coming, seeing how this would work? Well, of course it would. We would want people to come in. It was too late.
Yeah, it could've been called an art studio.
And, and he went to somewhere else.
Oh, gosh.
So, it, it was at least a shot at doing something different. And at the time, we were, uh, uh, thinking heavily of making it a kind of, uh, Lime Street South, uh, summertime place, or sort of a, uh, province town-like atmosphere.
I just thought of one other opportunity I wanna put on here, because I'm thinking about Black Hall Outfitters, which is a little bit outside of the Shoreline Gateway, but I don't wanna over, I don't wanna forget them. It, it's a great locate, great area for experiential retail, I would say, like Black Hall Outfitter, where you can try out the kayak and then buy the kayak. Or, you know, maybe there's other recreational type businesses that would have that same business model.
So it's, I was just looking, here's the zoning map. Hartford Avenue, it's bifurcated between the Soundview, middle of the street is R ten, and it's C ten, you know, so it has disparate zoning within the street. This is off the town website.
Oh, Shore Road or?
Hartford Avenue.
Hartford Avenue, sorry.
Hartford Avenue should be C V V D.
Yeah.
I mean, S V V D.
Right here, in the middle of Hartford Avenue.
And I think there's like a business there, too. There was a store.
I know, um, the Pavilion is R eighty. It's a residential, but grandfathered in. We'll take a look at that, Jeff, because- Oh, okay, I think, yeah. So the north end, okay, so the mini mart and the other gas station, those are C ten, commercial, commercial district. Then just south of those are residential, the house, the little houses. And then south of that is the Soundview Village District. Yeah, so that's the whole-
The street has three different zones.
Yeah.
And, and that's probably not that unusual in lots of parts of our town.
Okay. Anything else? Um, hopefully, I'll just, yeah, in a second. We're good on this for now? Okay, thank you. Um, Halls Road Improvement Overlay District, I'm gonna let Edie remind us all about the timing, what you're doing in front of, planning and zoning. Um, and then we're going to discuss a possible letter of support of the Halls Road Overlay District.
Hello? Um, I may have a little of my own SWAT analysis of Halls Road with the option of the H rod involved in it. So, let's see here. I mainly wanted to come today in case people had any questions about Halls Road that we didn't cover last month.
Yeah, and can you explain to us what you're doing in November, if we can do to support you?
Yeah, so we just, we just recently had the Halls Road Improvements Committee, um, look through in detail with the Overlay District in terms of what the details are, um, which, we have a few new members in our committee, so it was important to do that. Um, and we made a, a motion that was approved to take the Halls Road Overlay District to the Board of Selectmen in November and do a presentation for them and suggest that they use the overlay district as an application to zoning. Um, the way the path works is you send in the application, the town has sent in the application in, um, for the December meeting. It would be recognized as received. Typically, the next thing to happen is it would go to planning. Planning doesn't have a meeting in December, but they do have a meeting, just because of the way the calendar works, in January, ahead of zoning, which is a good thing, because they have to go to z, planning before they can go to zoning. So we would be presenting to planning in January and then also to zoning in January. And that's the time when color comments would happen during the zoning meetings. Um, last time we went through this routine, it took seven months. Supposed to take three. Um, there were a bunch of various glitches going on that I'm not gonna bother getting into, but basically, um, our, our inability to present to planning last time was a real issue for us, because we weren't able to answer their questions, which they had several questions about. So we'll make sure we present this time to planning and then talk with, um, do the presentation to zoning, the next step. So that's, month one is December, month two is January for our presentation, and month three, if everything goes according to plan, would be February, um, for them to make their decision. Uh, one of the things that we include in the application is letters of recommendation from individuals, as well as different commissions or staff. And being, um, Economic Development Committee, we feel like it would be very valuable to have your recommendation. Um, so, anything else?
Okay, and just, um, the reason you go to Board of Selectmen first is because the Halls Road Improvement Committee works on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. So they have been essentially, if you will, working on solutions to Halls Road on behalf, they've been tasked by the Board of Selectmen. So their first step is to go back to the Board of Selectmen and say, these are our recommendations for you, representing the town Board of Selectmen, to go before planning and zoning.
Right.
But they typically have used you as the spokesperson on their behalf-
Yes.
-to present to planning and zoning.
Yes, yeah.
As chair, yeah. And planning's role is to do what before zoning?
Uh, they're, they're expected to work within the P O C D, which is a document that they put together every ten years, and, um, recognize whether this application is in sync with that. I think they did not understand the application last time we did it. Uh, and actually, to that fact, the, um, the zoning commission pulled out three different instances in the P O C D where the Halls Road, uh, uh, application would, um, actually fit perfectly in what they're, uh, suggesting the town needs to do, like have more diverse housing, have, uh, make sure that the retail is, um, sound in town. Um, I'm forgetting the other one, but there's, there were three definite instances where the P O C D would recommend the Halls Road. Oh, there's also changes are needed on Halls Road. So, you know, we, we are facing the internet and many retailers are having a, a struggle, many are not. So the more service oriented retailers are doing much better than the big box idea, because you can, uh, buy everything at Amazon or anywhere else online. you can buy everything at Amazon or anywhere else online that you want to find. So for us in a town, by not making new opportunities on Halls Road, we're at the whim of developers who are looking for what's the best bang for their buck in a commercial area and servicing the highway is a more likely solution for them to do now than anything else commercially in this given climate. So by us doing nothing and not passing this overlay district, we know what, we sort of give up our control over what we want to see in our town. So if we want to see in our town that our commercial properties are still servicing the town's needs, we need to make sure we pay attention to how that gets done. And we've got some, some more dated strip center buildings that are gonna be needing repairs and servicing. And then we also have, you know, we just, we just brought in the new gas station situation. We've heard stories about how Cumberland Farms wanted to move into where the blue building is on the corner of Halls Road and 156. And that's a key place for a gas station to be put if you're looking at highway resources. So there's some real questions of what we want to see for our town. Is it about our town or is it about commercial doing what's best for commercial, which could be likely more services for the highway because that's commercially, people are not interested in building cute little shops these days. So in order to give some incentive to developers to maintain our wish to have restaurants and small shops and things that we want to go shop at, we have come up with this overlay that would allow to have some residential and more diverse types of residential instead of just commercial only. And that's the incentive to the, to the developer because building residential, especially mixed use, I mean, multifamily, is a big interest for developers right now and less interested in retail. So we're saying, build a little bit of retail and in return, you can do some multifamily housing. And that's, that's our suggestion on how the town can protect itself from becoming a pit stop to the highway by building things that will solve our needs as opposed to the highway's needs. So I'd love to answer any questions you guys might have.
I have, I have written up like four pages that I'm sure I'm gonna worry with, but, you know, this, this whole plan, I've been along since the beginning. And it's gone from, you know, sidewalks to sewers, and I'm just gonna refer to my notes because it's so much in my head, but it's gone from sidewalks and sewers to affordable housing to walking paths. Now there's like a bridge and a pier over a small river. And I don't know concrete things, like, I don't know what are the state's limitations that the state is gonna run on. What is the look of if I-95 gets wider or, you know, this is a state road, you know, what is the state saying you can or can't do on that road? How much have we spent so far on all of this? How much is it going to cost going into the future? Time since this started, one of the things that changed a lot was, we had that whole threat of Amtrap coming through that we had, we had to fight. And so, you know, things change and this is like a 40-year plan that, I don't know how long the plan would take, but, you know, things change all the time and I just, I feel like things have changed so much since this even started. I mean, I remember that very first meeting, I was literally sitting with people that were dreaming of Aspen in Old Line. And I thought that was, I, I thought that was crazy because I just moved here because I really liked the character of Old Line, I really enjoyed it. And I've, I've watched over the last 10 years as East Line and Old Zabrook have built so much and what do you see there? It's like a ton of traffic. So have there been patterned things done? Have we looked at what is the income potential of this? You know, there was a SWOT analysis, there was a town survey conducted, I felt like the town survey was very much at that time focused towards getting everybody to say, we need more housing, we need more housing. And I remember at that time, I had a friend who was like a single mom raising kids, who could buy a house by Rogers Lake. There was a lot of affordable housing at that time, there really was. So I didn't agree with affordable housing at that time, but, you know, now it's not as affordable, but, I mean, that's like a market thing, I mean, that's everywhere. There's just been so many different plans, there's been so many revisions, I don't even actually even know what the point is, especially now when we're talking about a bridge and a pier. Are the business owners happy with this traffic? I saw some of the plans that Board of Selectmen were presented with and they had all these numbers associated with it and we didn't get that last two weeks ago, we didn't get all those numbers. So I feel very uncomfortable putting my name on anything, especially in this litigious market that we're in. We've got lawsuits against the town from businesses that, you know, people are trying to stop. Look at the lawsuit that, you know, the gas stations, they had to put a lawsuit and how embarrassing that Economic Development said, we don't want you guys to do improvements on that property. And look at how beautiful that is. But this commission, prior meeting on it, said, we don't want you to do that. And they went ahead and they fought, they had to do a lawsuit, they sued our town, that costs a lot of money. It's a lot of we sued money. And actually, a lot of the people are on Halls Road Committee that signed that letter. Not a lot, but a few of them are. And now it's embarrassing. You know, it's just, it's just embarrassing. So if we're putting our names on something, are people gonna come and want to sue because they don't like what Halls Road Committee has just said? It's just not a good thing and I don't understand why there isn't more coordination with like zoning. I, I don't think, until we know what zoning wants and stuff like that, I don't, I don't feel comfortable saying yes or no to anything. I want numbers. I mean, I've heard these stories for 10 years now and it's changed, but they're similar. And now there's a bridge and a pier and it's just a lot of talking about things, but it's not numbers.
Which numbers are you looking for exactly? What, what does numbers mean to you?
We, we are Economic Development, so what is the financial projection at Halls Road Committee that's overlaying? What, what are the numbers that you're projecting?
So let me just try and answer one of those, okay? Because you've got a lot of questions.
No, no, I actually, I don't want an answer because I want to continue finishing because I have more. I mean, one of the things in the very beginning that everybody said was people just wanted sidewalks. We wanted sidewalks, we wanted lights. Look, now the state has put in sidewalks and the private business has put in sidewalks. We could easily find out how much it would cost to put in some sidewalks from them if we wanted to put in some sidewalks. I also did some analyzing because last two weeks ago, there was a lot of talk about that there's no room to walk. And I mean, I know a lot of children walk on the street, a lot of kids, older kids. I walk too, so I wanted to really look at that since the last meeting. And there are sidewalks over the bridge and there's walking areas too. So it's, we hear these things, hear these things. But I want how is this going to help the town numbers wise, like financial projections? I don't want what you think businesses are coming and going, but what is the overlay? What is the opportunity? And what are the numbers that go behind it? That's what I want. So I don't even, and it's not something that you can answer tonight because I know you don't have this information.
Well, we, we have some information. We certainly have information on what it would cost to build the sidewalks, to build the bridge. Just so you know, the most expensive thing to do for the town to do is the cost of building the sidewalks. And that's why the Halls Road Committee has been very involved in seeking grants to do that work. It still needs to be designed in order to get those grants to do the construction. It's, the sidewalks are coming in around $4.5 million to do the sidewalks through DOT. The bridge costs about a million and a half. To do the overlay district, which would allow developers to create new housing opportunities and new tax revenue to the town, actually would make money for the town, would not take away money, it would make money for the town. The overlay district, the cost to change the zoning is about $15,000. So we're talking $4 million for sidewalks, $15,000 for doing the zoning change.
How much did the new sidewalks cost down Gary Road? Didn't we just get new sidewalks?
I don't have that number.
That was a grant, I don't know how much.
That's a little bit different because there were already sidewalks there. And some of the places along Halls Road, from what you said last time we met, you can't widen the bridge, the road bridge where there are small sidewalks.
That sidewalk's not, it's not so bad though.
But it's not ADA.
It's not ADA. And also won't accept bike path. So the bike path has to have at least 36 inches and the road, the sidewalks are typically five feet. So there's all sorts of issues about trying to make that bridge bigger. We also, Bill Fallon, when he was on our committee, helped us look at some other situations in other towns, including Essex. And Essex has just put in some new sidewalks going down River Road and it crossed a small, very small bridge compared to what we're talking about with the Lieutenant River. But they were hoping to just enlarge that bridge that was for the roadway. And they found out it was too expensive to enlarge the bridge and instead it was much less expensive to build a pre-made bridge across the creek that was there. So it's not like we're not figuring out some of the math on these things and I totally appreciate the need for that and also the need for finding information about grants and how to help pay for some of these things because $4 million is more than I think the town is gonna want to pay for sidewalks. And another $400,000 just to do the design work. So there's, you know, there's need to get grants going and which we've applied for and we've been hearing back from some of these guys. We paid for the bulk of the design work for the bridge and pier through two grants already. So that saved us, you know, it was, I think the cost was $148,000 and when we got two grants, it was $163,000, $63,000. So we're, you know, there's math involved in the project. It's not just like, oh, throw this out, that's sweet cute ideas. And that's not going on here. We've been at this for almost 10 years.
I'm aware.
And, you know, the changes that are happening started in the very beginning. So when people said they wanted sidewalks, there were town meetings and a lot of people stood up and said, I would like to actually see Halls Road look nicer than it is. The original commercial part of town was on Lime Street. For 300 years, we had mixed use on Lime Street. We had housing, we had people in retail, we had people making things, manufacturing stuff, all happened on Halls Road. In order to ma, I mean, on Lime Street, I'm sorry. So in order to make Halls Road successful in 1960, they changed the zoning not only for Halls Road, but they changed it for Lime Street too, to make sure that Halls Road was successful, which was fine. It was an era when the car was everything, everybody wanted to make sure there were nice big parking lots for strip centers. It was the first time in the history of commercial work that they separated retail from residential. Up until then, all of a sudden, all over the country, we suddenly saw, because of the car, we saw people making strip centers, making shopping centers, making malls, making all the stuff we have today, which is now beginning to fail because we have people saying, I want to walk around my town and go shopping. You can't walk around town on Lime, on Halls Road because there's no sidewalks, it was never considered.
Well, there are, I mean, and, and this is, we've, you and I have talked about this, we've been in meetings before where I said, you, you definitely can walk in the.
Yes, you can walk on the grass, it's fine, you can walk on the grass.
You can walk, it's covered by.
Being.
Where Big Y is, the whole thing is covered. You can walk from Bauer Bird all the way to Walgreens and it's completely covered and there are little alcoves there and sitting areas. So the business owner, the private business owners that own it, like, they, they got it the way that they want it.
Well, they've got it because it exists and they can rent there.
I'm not talking about the renters, I'm talking about the private property owners.
All, all the, all the properties on Halls Road are owned by separate investors and the Big Y, the Walgreens, the, the new hardware store or improved hardware store, I'll say, Bauer Bird, they all rent those properties. They do not own those properties. The only property owner that has a store in it is Treasures. Everyone else is renting their properties. This is typical of retail.
Right, and that's what, they're private, they're private businesses, private people that own them.
Right, and one of the things we heard loud and clear was from, from Walgreens, nobody knows we're down here. They know the Big Y's here, but nobody knows we're here.
I, I don't know.
And we're seeing a change where people are beginning to realize the town center along a streetscape is a much more walkable, friendly place for people than it is to be a strip center, yes.
But you could, you could put forth this Halls Road Overlay District and, you know, the bridge never got built, you could still build all this, you could still put forth this without the bridge.
That's true.
So, you know, you could separate that or may not, if it doesn't get the grant or the funding that Old Line needs, it never gets built, but the rest of this could go forward.
Yeah.
So.
In a sense though, the bridge is low hanging fruit and the money is coming from outside because the state does want improvements to water access.
Yes.
Every, in every town. So that's kind of a, it's, it's not a given, I know you have a lot to work, a lot more work to do on it, but you did work and you had to do more. But that idea is not all brand new Halls Road. People have been kicking stones in the water over at the Bridge Abutment there for a long time.
Yes, yes, they have.
And I remember Economic Development discussing the idea of a linear park for that stretch of the old Route 1, which was viewed as pie in the sky. The term itself turned people off because it seemed like it was in frippery. But in fact, it belonged to the state and the state gave it to us.
It doesn't actually, the, the town is in the process of owning all of that property.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, the state is getting, yeah, the state is getting.
That's right.
And, and the sidewalks, you could, and, you know, you could make the private developers pay the sidewalks.
That's right.
You know, so, so, I mean, the four and a half million dollars is a lot of money. You could, you could hang it on one of the developers if you, if it not make the town pay for that, so.
Mona, one of your concerns was coordination with zoning. And my understanding is that when you went before zoning last year and it wasn't passed, a lot of feedback was given to the committee on what they wanted to see. Correct me if I'm wrong, and that's been incorporated into the new proposal.
Yes, it has. And actually, had it not been given a negative review by Planning who did not understand the project, it would have passed last March because it was a two to three vote that was in favor of passing it. So, you know, it was right on the edge of, of what was needed. So, you know, we, we have made the changes, we've added affordable, we've added.
Tell us what zoning wanted.
A couple of them was that the overlay had to comply with existing, like the Connecticut River Gateway Commission has a certain height restriction in our zone that the Halls Road falls into. And that, we had asked to do a 40-foot height minimum, a maximum height. We had to go down to 35 feet, which is difficult for developers. That's, that's a, that's a bummer. Because, and, and a lot of, a lot of the, okay, so that was one thing. So we, you know, we, we put in that if there are existing conservation type of rulings in our town, we have to comply with that. So that was definitely one thing that we did. We added the affordable, once affordable requested the zoning, made sure that that was in there.
There was something about like how long a stretch could be?
Yeah, we've, we've put in, we Yeah, we, we put in, we did an analysis of buildings on Lime Street as well as Hall's Road and talked about, you know, there's, there's buildings along Hall's Road that are altogether, they're over three hundred feet long. We're suggesting two hundred feet would be the maximum. And that it would be no more than twenty thousand square feet of footprint per building. So, this, these are all little areas that make sure that nothing gets overbuilt on Hall's Road either. We don't wanna see that, we're, we're very adamant about that. I'm trying to think of some of the other ones that went in there. There were also a couple of comments from the folks that were alternates, that were unsure about it. One was about the infrastructure question, septic and, and water. We did a soil study with CLA Engineering to find out what the situation was. What was good for them was that there already are septic systems in Hall's Road. And they also did a full survey of the, of the geologic properties of, of the district. And they came back with a favorable review and said, this is, this is fine for mixed use, for multifamily housing, it would work here. Another question was, does the DOT even know what we're doing? So, we backed up and made sure we had a full meeting with the DOT, with several different representatives, including one of the highest guys in traffic study. And they said, you know, what you're doing is what's called complete streets, according to the DOT's newest version of things that they are willing to back. Instead of just trying to get traffic from one end to the other as fast as possible, they're recognizing that commercial areas that can offer bike and pedestrian and transit oriented services is a good idea. So, complete streets includes pedestrian, basically sidewalks, landscaping, lighting, safety issues, bike paths, and transit stops for vehicles, for buses. So, that's totally in compliance with what the DOT wants to see, is, is embracing these days for commercial areas. They did say, you know, you need to make sure with whatever gets approved that a traffic study's done for each individual developer that wants to do some changes on Hall's Road. And we would also encourage that if you can connect any kind of behind Hall's Road, private properties connecting between ones, one parking lot and another can connect so you have some offshoots of, of ways to get through Hall's Road, other than just on Hall's Road. I see you smiling over there.
Good luck with that, who's gonna pay for that?
Well, that's a developer thing, yeah.
Right, they're not gonna wanna do that.
To connect parking lots?
Yeah, it's like, nice to have.
I love that when I.
Well, of course you would, you'd still agree with us.
Well, I mean, if it, if it's contiguous with another parking area, it, it wouldn't be impossible unless it's geographically a problem.
Correct, you're right.
You know, the, the property where the Big Y is, is one, is a huge piece of, single piece of property that was once invested in by local townspeople and all bond. And when they did the expansion from what was just the AMP, hardware stores today, they expanded it to put in where the Big Y is today. And that, actually was an AMP at first. But when they expanded it, they didn't have the funding to do that expansion. So, they brought in an investor to help them with that project. And that's who now owns all the property. But there's been rumors, and I have yet to find anything more on about it, but there's a rumor that someone is interested in purchasing that whole property. Also, the, where the hideaway is, I just saw a, was that what you gave me? Yes, yeah. So, they, you know, they're mentioning that the overlay district is a possibility which makes it more favorable for people to purchase that property. So, they're trying to sell it using the idea of the overlay for it. I can't think of any other major changes we added to this thing. You know, we're not gonna allow self-storage areas, we're not allowing gas stations, which was always part of it. We allow EV stations, you know, charging stations, which is great because then people will park their car and charge it and walk around town and possibly buy something there. Anyway, we would love to have your support and if there's anything you can do to help come up with that.
How, how specific a, an amount of support do you ask? Point by point or conceptual?
No, that we, that you think that it's, it's within keeping of, of the mission of the EDC would be sufficient for us.
With our SWAT stuff, we could.
Yeah, to pull that out.
Already on the record.
Yeah, that you, you know, you've looked at the project and think it's viable and would be valuable to the town. I mean, economic development.
Well, other issues while, while we're here, I'll, I'll sweeten the pot a little bit by discussing, or at least raising the issue of affordable housing. Is that part of your construct?
Yes, it is, yes.
And that's something you had left out because you were concerned it would make it less desirable to people in town, but zoning said, no, we want affordable housing there.
Yeah, so it's better to have zoning request it than for us to suggest it. Hate to say it, but, you know, I mean, I think it's a good idea, but.
Affordable housing is a bad idea unless it's you who are going to be affordable. You as the grandfather, grandmother who wants to stay in town, are ruining the pain.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of people in town who would like to downsize and they can't find anything in this town to go to. And that's, that's a difficult thing.
I have to say, I went along with CD to some presentations to different groups. I'm thinking of the first congregational church one in particular. And at the end of these presentations, there would be people in their retirement years saying, I would love a chance to live in a nice townhouse or condo or apartment on Hall's Road and be able to walk to get a coffee or to get a gallon of milk or something. I mean, it, people were excited about that concept. They were like, please hurry up, yeah, still working on it.
But Lam Regis, the condo setup over there on the, on the footprint of the original Old Line Inn, was supposed to be vaguely affordable. And it turned out to be not vaguely affordable.
Yeah.
It was very nice, but it.
Well, and, and the Boxwood is another apartment setup, which is actually three full stories high. But, you know, there's not a lot around, it's, it's difficult. I know, I know probably four people who've left town, who are older people that wanted to move somewhere and, you know, couldn't afford to take care of a house anymore. And they were just, they left, they had to go away. Just nothing here.
Well, I don't think having apartments above stores is gonna be very useful for people that are in their older years, unless you've got elevators.
No, well, you'd have to put, you'd have to put elevators in. But there is also a huge population of new people coming to the Art Academy that would be happy living above a store.
The students? Yeah.
We just heard about them, you know, they're, every semester, they're adding ten more students and they're, they're getting to a point where they just can't find housing for people.
Wasn't that a part of the, the cross street?
That's gone, there's, there's, what, there's six minutes over there?
They're private, yeah, they're, yeah, privately owned.
Well, the, the original plan from Diana, et cetera, was to have it available for students. And if the students didn't occupy it, then it would go on the market at fair market value. And it seemed to be occupied rather rapidly by non-students.
I think after University of New Haven left, that lot, that property, piece of the property was sold.
Yeah, because it was sort of in limo for a while, yeah.
I think there was, there's a, remains of that original chunk was still there for, it was for sale for two million dollars some years ago. And with people shuffling and around and hard to figure out who actually owned it. I mean, it was written down, but it was still hard to figure out where and how the.
And they were, they were built specifically to answer the needs of more than a student. So, you know, they've got garages and they've got full kitchens.
Pretty nice.
Yeah, they're, you know, they're made for, more for like the teachers or something, you know, the, the, yeah. And I, I know that they came to the first selectman recently, the Art Academy came to Martha and said, we need to find more housing for our people, our kids are, you know, they're coming here from Montana and stuff and have nowhere to live, so it's.
And their parents, this is true some years ago, their parents are quite curious as to where their child is gonna stay.
It's a safe town, but there's nowhere to live.
Right, right.
But, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's a suggestion for a change for Hall's Road. A lot of people, you know, when they first moved here, that was what was the given and that was what everybody knew. When I first lived here as a baby, I've been living here for a long time and Lime Street was where the market was. Lime Street was where the post office, the hardware, the drugstore, all of that was on Lime Street. And now it's on Hall's Road and it's not something that I really, you see people walking up and down Lime Street all the time. There's barely anything to shop for, but they still walk here, it's pretty. You, you see people occasionally walking on Hall's Road, but it's, it's.
It's not inviting. And it's nice also in terms of a sense of place, when people are walking, like you see on Lime Street, they're walking their dog or just out for an evening stroll, they're stopping and talking to each other. And that's what we really wanna encourage as well as a community, is community building and.
But from this design, just I don't see any, I don't see why you think people would walk more in this design.
Because there'd be, there'd be shops up along the street as opposed to set sixty feet or more back from the street.
It doesn't mean that people will be walking more up and down because you're still parked in here.
Well, I'm sure people will walk it no matter what, but you don't see it.
But you know what, Mona, there are times when my husband and I are interested in going for a walk, we'll say, let's go down to Essex. You know, downtown Essex.
Our guests will go to Essex.
Or the Ford Walk in Niantic.
Or Chester.
Yeah, yeah. And when we walk the Niantic Ford Walk, we walk the sidewalk on the way back. You do the sidewalk one way and then you're walking with the shops on the way back.
Well, my husband and I wanna go for a walk, we drive down to Way San Beach and we go for a walk there. So, it might be your personal preference, but I don't think that putting a overlay district in is gonna make more people walk there. I just don't think, just because this design is different. And in fact, when I'm looking at it, you know, this is, because there are no numbers attached to it, what it, what would be this potential square foot footprint in buildings? And again, the income potential. And I understand that you've talked about because there'll be second stories and rented out so there's more tax. But what are the numbers? So, that's what I would like to see, I'd like to say, you know, because, I mean, this looks like, you know, you're getting rid of the whole thing of the Big Y, the long plaza there.
If a developer wanted to.
Breaking it into.
Right, it's not a requirement, it's an opportunity to do something different if a developer chose to.
If the current owner wants to keep it the way they is, that it is, it stays the way it is. If they decide to sell and someone buys it and they wanna keep it the way it is, it stays the way it is. If they want to change things up, they are allowed to within the zoning to build up closer to the street and create a, you know, a walkable village setting. It's an opportunity for a developer.
It's not a requirement at all, that, that's totally not a requirement. It's an opportunity, and the real opportunity is, as a developer, you're allowed to make more money on putting in multifamily housing. And, you know, what you have for a single-story commercial building, you can build twice as high, and you figure out the math there. I mean, you got a hundred bucks for this and another hundred, another hundred, that's three hundred, not one hundred. I mean, you know, I don't know how to do the math for you because I can't, I don't have the time to go figure out the cost of each individual property. But it's, it's a pretty obvious figure, and I think you could figure it out.
I wouldn't say it's pretty obvious, I've talked to many people who you haven't spoken to, who also have questions and concerns like I do. I'm not the only person in town who has questions.
No, I know, I know, there's plenty of people who are opposed to things.
I'm just probably one of the few that would actually ask the question, where I, you know, I don't, I'm not afraid to ask questions.
Sure, no, I appreciate it.
So, it's probably about two hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot to build a building. So, you know, you can take it times the square footage and then take the mil, take it by seventy percent times the mil rate, now it'd be the tax revenue. So, square footage roughly conservative, two twenty-five, times seventy percent, times mil rate will get to the, to the tax impact. So, it'll be more, it'll be a substantial increase to the town's revenue. And then there's the multiplier impact of jobs created.
But see, okay, so we're looking at proposals, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so this building already exists, right? Maybe that one doesn't, that one does, right there, and then maybe these don't. So, those would be new, like, because some are potentially new.
Yeah, incremental square foot you're asking.
But then, you know, like here, you know, there's this whole thing where.
Probably a zero, no incremental taxes. So, incremental taxes along the road and here, so it's probably eyeballing about fifty percent of the yellow would be used square footage, so.
I wouldn't say so, I mean, I would say you're losing some here, you're gaining some here, but it's.
I don't think anybody, I don't, I think if I, I don't think when you say losing, it's almost gonna, that building's not gonna go away. Big Y's not gonna go away.
Well, this is where Big Y is, right here.
Right, well, it's not gonna go away.
No, but like right now, this is one big long thing all the way over to the post office here.
Right, so there, so that one long thing, they're all paying taxes, so that'll stay the same. So, it's your point, that's not incremental taxes here, the incremental taxes would be here and there.
You're actually losing some stuff back here, there's no parking back here right now. So, something is going away so that you can have this parking back here.
No, only, only if the owner wants to go away. It's not, the Hall's Road overlay district does require space to be moved. It's, it provides existing owners' optionality to enhance what they have. If they don't wanna do anything, they'll just continue along the way, the way it is. So, there's property taxes and then there's indirect, you know, the multipliers for new jobs created. There's construction multipliers on, you know, construction jobs. So, the impact is property taxes and then the long-term jobs that are created by those, those new buildings, not existing, the jobs already exist, the new buildings. I think, now, if I'm the Big Y and I can see all these residents come over there and they're gonna need to shop, that's not gonna raise my revenue at Big Y because all those residents are gonna need to eat and shop. And so, this actually enhances some of these businesses. The Walgreens will get more people, more prescription will be filled. So, you know, the, the multiplier impact of this, you know, you can see.
Well, I don't feel that this is a fully developed plan. I haven't seen enough information to feel comfortable to make any kind of concrete. Yes, I fully support that.
I don't think the word fully has to be part of that.
The last time we.
It's a project which is going to be in development for many years. And it's subject to private investment. Now, it doesn't mean that you're wrong, it means that it's not done yet. And it's not gonna be done until the, the secret sauce is added by the actual people who are willing to risk money. On the other hand, if we create the open arms, which is the bridge and the sidewalks, and the, the sense that we are not gonna wash our hands of it and just put up a, it used to be down there in Milford, remember the Mayflower truck stop?
The bridge and the sidewalks are actually, the, the bridge is more of a problem that I have than even any of this other stuff. It is, it was just, it is just the overlay block, and that would've been one thing. But what was presented to for the election was more of the bridge plan and that, there's a lot of unknown costs and whether the private business owners want this or they don't want this, and I just feel like that was a totally different presentation. So, I'm just feeling like it's not very transparent, I'm not comfortable with it. And so, whatever you all decide, I just don't want my name associated with it.
So, I think there are two different things. The bridge is a. So I think there are two different things. The bridge is a project in itself and the sidewalks. The overlay district, earlier tonight, you were very passionate sharing with us that there are people in town and businesses outside of town who feel that anything they want to do is turned down. And that Old Line is an unwelcoming place and that people hit, um, walls at zoning. For me, the overlay district is a way of saying, not only are we willing to let you, you know, do what you're currently doing, but if you want to add multifamily house, you know, a couple apartments on the second floor, whatever it may be, yeah, we have a way of doing that with you. And here's how we can do it.
Remember when I said it earlier that when we had that townwide survey, it was very much geared towards everybody saying that they wanted a fourth of a half. I just don't think that the vision that is being pushed is really the vision that everybody wants. I know everybody in this room seems to think so. And so I'm feeling a little bit like, you know, one against the team. I think if Wendy were here or if MJ were here, they might have similar feelings about this. So I do feel that they should be part of the conversation and they're not here. I know they have both tested and expressed concerns, but they're not here. And so I'm the only one here as a voice to express concerns.
Okay. Um, how do we want to proceed? Do we want to hold?
We should ask five questions for Edie and we probably should let her go. So we can talk amongst ourselves.
Does anyone have additional questions for Edie?
Okay.
I think I'll go home.
Thank you very much, Edie.
Thank you. Thanks for considering it.
And then we want to consider, are we, how do we want to proceed? Do we want to come back to this at our next meeting or what do we want to do?
Uh, I am concerned about two things that, two things that you said. My concern, uh, if we don't do something fairly soon, there will be a giant gas station off of Exit Seventy. Because that is an economic prospect which would be desirable for the, the, the big gasoline station developers, which are basically little towns. What I was said flippantly a minute ago, the Mayflower, uh, truck stop in Milford.
But, okay.
Let me just finish the, the concept because that's something, if I were a giant gas station chain, I would look at that whole area there and say, hey, everything right up to the Big Y is fair game. That's pretty large when you look at all of that backed up to the highway. So would someone be interested in? I'm not going to go out and try to sell it to somebody. They can look at the, the map of the turnpike and excluding, uh, potential railway development. I say Riley because that's not going away. But the fact is, that's pretty attractive to a, to a developer that has no concern whatsoever about the town. It'll be great for you, they'll say. You'll get all these taxes. And then the entrance to the town is really eroded, so to speak. On the other hand, let me carry on the really unknown secretary. The, the, uh, the bridge and its approach, the old bridge and its approach is, to me, as a non-developer, sort of scrap land, you're not going to be able to build anything significant on that, a ton of land which is basically landfill when the, uh, when Ruwan was constructed after the, in nineteen eleven. When that, when that bridge appro, the bridge over the Connecticut was built and then the.
The Baldwin Bridge?
No, before the Baldwin.
Oh, okay.
Nineteen eleven, it's the first, the first one of the old one. And that went right across a, and right down Hall's Road till it stopped. But that section of Hall's Road was basically swamp or pasture land, whatever they called it. So it never developed. And I don't see that as developing now, given, you know, zoning, et cetera. But it does offer the opportunity for a nice destination for people to drive in, park their cars, get a cup of coffee, walk over the bridge, go over the Florence Griswold or whatever. I mean, uh, it has become a destination to, to go there. And then, once you're there, you're gonna buy something, we hope. So consequently, a, a letter that endorses the concept wouldn't hurt. And we don't have to be responsible for what developers do or do not do. But we are closing the door slightly on the giant gas station truck stop, uh, concept. Somebody comes up with something better far away and wants to build a, an oldie mystic village, except they call it Oldie Old Line Village. Is that good or bad, Jeff?
I don't know. I think Chestnut Market's pretty compelling. I think that may block any other large scale gas. They did a nice job there. Mona, what were you gonna say?
No, I was just gonna say that, that's a, unless there is a large scale developer that has a large scale vision and large scale money, we really just want to keep the, the, uh, the trucks out, so to speak, beyond people delivering things to us, including Kellogg, uh, of that area. So it's important, I think, that we do something fairly soon. It doesn't mean tonight, but fairly soon. And, uh, I would go, be willing to draft a three paragraph letter, which is subject to approval. I think we've done this much before, actually.
Yeah. What if, what if we have a starting point to discuss at the next meeting?
And I'll leave plenty of space between lines for people to write in changes.
We had a letter six, from six months ago. We were chatting with the. Same then, right? And our letter was extremely generic, just so we supported that. And I'm, I'm pro-business. I'm pro-business a hundred percent. This particular project seriously has had so many changes. It has been, when you build a house on sand, which I feel like the whole house, Hall's Road thing was, it was built on sand. And it never had a firm foundation. And you just, parts of it, I'm okay, I get, I understand. I don't like all of it though. I, I just, and I definitely think that the whole bridge idea, that just took a turn with everything that. I don't know.
So I feel like the bridge, this, my impression from listening in is that the bridge occurred as an outpouring from the fact that you can't put sidewalks on the existing bridge. And the only way to get a sidewalk is to do something different. Am I, am I missing something? It's not like it was suddenly, we want to do this bridge. It was, how do we actually get sidewalks that are compliant with current rules, ADA, on a very narrow bridge, right? Isn't that an issue? That like for that?
Well, on, on existing on Hall's Road.
I see with people walking two and three abreast on Hall's Road every day. My window opens up out onto Hall's Road in the building where Dunkin' Donuts is, where a lot of people walk to.
That happens to be a stretch, sorry, sorry, where there is no.
Correct. There are no sidewalks at all on that side of the street beyond, I think, that bridge. And even the sidewalk on the bridge is not, you can't ride a bike down it and it, you can't even.
If you pass someone, you have to step out onto the road.
Right.
I think it's illegal to ride bikes on sidewalk anyway, but there is.
But if you, if someone's got a stroller, you're stepping off onto the road to go, you know, if you're passing them.
On that bridge.
And there are strollers on Hall's Road. If they're on that bridge, I've done it plenty of times. You, you're stepping off the road to pass them. Yeah, you're stepping onto the road.
The, the documents that were presented to the board of the selectmen the other night included dates, projected dates and costs, which we weren't given, so it was very.
But that's a separate process. You know, they're looking at the whole of Hall's Road. The bridge is not part of the overlay district aspect of this. And what she's asking us.
I don't think this is just the bridge that I was looking at.
Well, what.
So the overlay is just a, a zoning opportunity. It's not anything that costs anyone.
That's where I have trouble because if we're writing a letter, there, I feel like I don't know what we're writing a letter about.
Oh, we're writing it about the overlay district. Yeah, it's not about the bridge.
Not about the bridge.
About the zoning changes, making an overlay district.
And the, and the attached design guidelines we should.
Yeah.
We should, there's.
But then I would like a list of the attached.
Yeah, my, my role would be, I, I would recommend that everybody get the zoning and the attached design guidelines when we come back here at our next meeting and then we, yeah, take a vote on it. But everybody should get, and we should, you know, look, I've looked at them and, you know, some of them are really conservative. You know, the, the height, the ceiling, you know, the building height, the number of, of square footage, per retail square footage per parking space of two hundred is very conservative. You know, most towns have two fifty and this is two hundred, so there's more parking. So I think they've been thoughtful on this. So I would recommend that we circulate the zone, the proposed zoning and design guidelines and we come back here at the next meeting and, um, we decide if we're going to support. And I, I would strip out the bridge out of this and not, you know, I, I, you know, we shouldn't.
Yeah, I don't think that's what we're being asked about.
Yeah, that's not what they're going before zoning about. They're going before zoning and planning and to the selectmen right first on the overlay district. Am I?
Which is the zoning change.
Just getting a zoning difference.
Yes.
So I don't think, we're not gonna take a position on whether the bridge and trick ourselves.
I'm just looking for.
Having your point about having everybody here, I, I think I agree with you.
I'm just looking.
But then, I mean, it just gets very confusing when the bridge is part of the document that we've been given. So how, how are we to know that it's not part of?
We have to read, we have to read the zoning regulations, designs. You can see clearly it's not in there. So we all read that and you can see that.
Yeah. And Mona, what, um, Edie came last time to talk about with us were all of the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities on Hall's Road as a commercial district. What she's back now to talk about is that they're going before zone, eventually going before zoning to change the zoning regulations for those private lots to open up more opportunities. And that's what she's looking for the letter of, um, support for on zoning changes.
So, but it does say right here in the component, and I'm not trying to be rude.
No, no. Yeah, yeah, no.
But I do not want to put my name on anything that I do not agree with.
Right.
Right here, their Hall's Road master plan.
Yeah.
Number two is Ridge and Pier at Lieutenant River.
Yeah, that's the master plan. Is there somewhere on those four bullets that says overlay district?
Yes.
On the private development, Hall's Road overlay.
That one bullet is what we are being asked to potentially write a letter of support for, just that one bullet.
So in the letter, you could draft, i- i- if you supported the zoning and design, you, to the letter, you could attach as an exhibit the draft legislation and the design. So it's clear that we only support these two documents. We don't use this as a supporting document. We attach this as exhibit, again, repeating myself, the zoning and the design. So it's really clear what we're saying we support.
So I know those documents are online somewhere. I just have to find them and, um, excuse me, circulate them. John, you're gonna draft a letter.
I'll draft a letter and, and it will be.
That we can, you know, push and pull on next time?
I, I, my conception of it is that we want to eliminate the negative and accentuate the positive. I mean, at that, at this moment, things like, just shifting gears slightly, things like the bridge will take care of themselves, I think, because it's state land and public land that we're dealing with here. And we cannot build, build wide sidewalks on Hall's Road because it, the land is up along to the town. But if we present something which is positive, the state has shown its willingness in very recent years to, uh, to go along with improvements that in, that involve people, individual people as, as opposed to space for automobiles. I mean, we've seen that in other places and other towns have faced this. East Line and Niantic went off in the wrong direction for about thirty years and then it changed its mind. Narrowed the street essentially. So they made some mistakes too. Things have happened, but, but some pre-built buildings that aren't so terrible. But, you know, they didn't really intend that to be the case. Well, we have to start thinking ahead. So I, I'm off track now, but I'll be happy to draft something.
Okay.
It will be, uh, not too warm and fuzzy, but, uh, I'll, you'll see.
Okay.
It will have to do with sense of place.
Okay.
Preservation of that sense of place.
Thank you. And I will, uh, send everyone a link to the updated, um, proposed zoning changes and the design guidelines. Okay? Anything else on the Hall's Road District? All right, next, um, area updates. I received a couple of them, but I haven't received all of them. So I will put them, uh, I'll remind some people to send in their updates and then we'll put them together for the November sixth meeting, um, to be shared beforehand. New and other business, a couple of things, uh, Chestnut Market is having a grand opening on Friday. I emailed you all from twelve to six. They're having music and games and prizes. And they're having a ribbon cutting at one o'clock that we're all invited to. Martha and Jude will also be attending. I sent out some other invitations as well. So if you can make it, I know some of you are working that day or out of town that day. If you can't make it, that's okay. But if you can make it, please plan to join us. Kellogg Marine, I am connecting directly with the person Monday or Tuesday coming up. But, um, their director of operations, who actually sits in Pompano Beach, Florida, is planning to be part of our November sixth meeting. I don't know if that's by Zoom or if he's in Connecticut that day. But, um, so we want to have questions for Kellogg Marine about their planned expansion. Wendy brought up the good question last time, are they planning to add jobs or, you know, things that are relevant to the EDC's support as opposed to wetlands and, and that sort of thing. We're looking at the business angle of it. Mona, did you want to share your, um, revenue information tonight?
We can. I mean, just real quick, we'll send it out to everybody via email, but I'll pass it both ways if you guys want to look at it. Just, and it may not be complete. We haven't double checked it on anything. But the first one is, this is just all of the businesses that are in the street area off of Exit Seventy-One. And then how much revenue each street is bringing in. And then there's a total for them at the bottom. And then this is Hall's Road. So that one was about over by Seventy-One. It was around, I don't know, four fifty maybe. And then there's more, like a hundred and ten thousand more on Hall's Road.
Yeah. And I want to thank Mona for pulling, we talked at our last meeting about looking for tax information. So that's your first pass, Mona.
Yeah.
She, she got directions from the tax office. Yeah, so we, we, we'll take a close look at it and, um, see if there's any addresses we want to add or take out. And if, you know, um, there's anything duplicate in there. But I appreciate you pulling all that together. That's, you did an amazing.
This, this is a first.
Yeah.
The first time I've seen any day like this.
Twenty-two numbers, but, uh, a couple of streets, for some reason, I had twenty-two-three numbers. So I used those because they were higher. And so I was like, well, that's better if they are, right?
Yeah.
I only can laugh because I see my own.
I know.
Oh, sorry, do you? Public information. Public information. Yeah.
That property stuff, that is ridiculous.
Oh, my God, I had to, I had to sign as a witness for the person.
That's like just me.
So Jen, these are tax income to the town, revenue, tax revenue from-
I can send you, or we can send you a PDF.
Yeah, yeah. Hall's Road versus LI-
I call it Hattletown.
Hattletown, okay. We're going to add Vista Drive to it, because it's-
Vista Design.
Okay, so Hall's Road versus LI slash D, the Light Industrial Distribution Zone. Thank you.
Like the black and white numbers are the topic.
So that's great zonero, so, zona, Mona, excuse me, and zone. So we'll fine-tune it and make, and double-check it. And then we'll have a really nice benchmark for what's going on.
And with Hall's Road, you'll see that I did include Huntley Road, because it's part of the area.
Yeah, there are businesses off of there. Although there is also residential.
Did I include some?
Well, she's just saying there are some on that road, so just double-checking them, yeah.
I think I did.
But that's why we have a few more weeks to fine-tune it. So it's an excellent first pass, so thank you.
Yeah, I think I did two residences on Huntley.
Well, there's a couple of places where there's residences. Like even like, paying the veterinary office, there's a couple houses.
Yeah, we think about it.
There was, that, that road-
Davis.
Was Davis Road, yeah. Oh, wait, I didn't include it.
Yeah, so there you go. So we're just gonna, we'll do a double-check, and, yeah, the veterinarian, and the four Davis. So good. Excellent.
Yeah, just start.
Start. Okay, I have one other thing. We all have connections in town. So please remember, when you are speaking to merchants or other business in town, that you're speaking as a resident. When discussing their concerns, you can say, I'll bring your concern to the EDC. But cannot, it's best not to speak on behalf of the EDC. You're speaking on behalf as a resident. Also, I want to be really clear that all of us, any of us, can always bring our concerns from the community to the EDC, and our decisions are made by vote. I am only one of nine votes. I don't, I hope I don't come across as someone who is ambushing ideas or trying to keep issues off the table. I, if I am like that, I hope you will bring that to my attention. But we're a commission of nine members, and every member has an equal vote. So if there are issues that you hear about in the community, and you want to bring them to a meeting, you can either let me know ahead of time, and I'll put it on the agenda, or we can, you can bring it up under new or other business. Any questions on that? Okay, is there any new or other business? Yeah.
I received, as a state-owned business, I received something in the mail from the Old Saybrook Economic Development Commission, having a website for all the Old Saybrook businesses and organizations. So you can post all your events. I just wanted to show, you know, the Saybrook sometimes.
Oh, interesting.
So they took some grant money to build a website for everyone. It's a community website, they can post their events, and it's kind of a website for events and activities in the town. So this came out Monday, received this in the mail.
Okay, that's good to know. And it's separate from the chambers?
Yes.
Interesting.
I note that Miranda Creative is the, their host.
Yeah.
They have been very active in Eastern Connecticut Chamber of Commerce for many years, and have received many awards. And the individuals involved have received many awards, have some high visibility, and again, the region. So Saybrook appears to be making itself finally to Eastern Connecticut.
And Miranda Creative has been very generous with their time. They do workshops for businesses on, you know, how, social media strategy and many other things. And they did the new logo for the Greater Old Saybrook Chamber of Commerce and the Say Old Saybrook branding. So this is-
So your point earlier about, you know, we have to treat all businesses equally. We studied this, and we wanted to do something like this. This is a vehicle to create everyone equally.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, good, I'm going to take a look at this, thank you. Is there anything else?
I asked you about that leadership, that Region 18 meeting. So once a month, they have that meeting.
You asked me if I went to a leadership meeting, and I said I don't.
So Region 18 has a monthly meeting on Saturday, Friday, every month, where there are projections of what is going on. And I was wondering if I could start participating, just to get information to bring back here to EDC.
Is, I don't, is it a closed meet?
It's not a closed meeting, anybody can go. But I would want to go just to get information for us. Because as taxpayers, it makes a difference how much they're spending.
So, what, I understand the taxpayer part. What, how would it relate to our economic development decisions and planning?
Well, it would be an opportunity just to find out what they're, what they're doing. Because I'm not going to the Board of Education meetings anymore, because I'm here. And our meetings are at the same time. But it would be another opportunity to hear what Ian's plans are.
I mean, any-
I have not been on the Board of Ed for a while, but it was my impression that that was a meeting of leaders of the district and the town leadership. So the selectmen from both towns. I was not aware that it was open to the public, so I'm not. But things change, and I haven't been on the board for a number of years, so.
I mean, if you want to find out more about it, I'm... Find out more about it.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing nothing else? Do I have a motion? I think our one motion of the evening, Jen. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that.
And Jean is seconding, all in favor? Aye, okay, thank you very much.